This is Jason Anderson, and I am calling this special town council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, and is currently 7:03 PM. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Whitehead and Ms. George. Moving on in the agenda, item three, interviews of boards and commission applicants. First up is Margaret Weaver, who is seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. She is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. Her term would run from April 1st, 2023 through March 31st of 2028. Ms. Weaver's attendance over the course of her appointment has been consistent with minimal absenteeism. Since her appointment in 2018, she has been absent with notice once. Historic District Commission has one alternate member vacancy. Welcome.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about your time on the Historic District Commission and why you're seeking reappointment?
Well, I originally was, I'm the town historian, so I would always go to the Historic District Commission meetings like a consultant liaison, and we were having difficulty getting enough voting members for a quorum, so we discovered that there would be no conflict with me being actually also on the Historic District Commission and being a voting member. So that's how I came to be an actual member of the Historic District Commission. You're only interested in my formal time being there or? I mean, the Historic District Commission has two historic districts and several historic properties in town, and we have oversight over changes that are visible from the exterior, from the road, from the back of the property. And in fact, we have two applicants coming with proposals at this next meeting. So that's one of the things we do. We also have been trying to educate the public, and in the lobby, there's a brochure that has been put out. We did have grant money from the Connecticut Historic, I don't know the proper name now. It used to be the Connecticut Historical Commission, but we did have grant money to help do that, so that it explains to people what the commission does. And we've had several members that have volunteered to be, new members that have volunteered to be on the commission since that was put out. And I'm kind of there as a, because I've been historian for many years and have been researching for many years, I'm kind of there as a liaison, almost, a backup, because I remember what happened in many other years, long before the current members are on the (laughing). In other words, I'm old.
Well, on behalf of the council in town, I just want to thank you for your dedication and your service to the community, and thank you for seeking reappointment. I will open up the council members. Any questions or comments? Mr. Wood?
I'll leave it on to the Historic District Commission there, and Margaret provides a lot of great feedback and definitely valuable asset to the commission, so definitely would support her continuing on, as long as she continues to want to continue on.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
I actually had served on Historic District before I got onto the town council, and I, you know, Maggie's got a great source of information, and we live in a great town. We live in an incredibly historic town, and if you haven't read her piece in The Villager, she writes, she's got so much time on her hands, she has time to write a piece, so.
Oh, no.[283.64][283.64](laughing) No time on my hands.[286.33][286.33](laughing) But I'm always looking for ideas for the column, so if somebody has lived here a long time and says, "Oh, why don't you write about this?", you know, send me an email. I won't write, I will not write about things that are negative, about people being arrested and things like that.[311.25][311.25](laughing) That's not what the column is about, but, you know, there's certainly many interesting human interest stories. This month is Women's History Month, so I'm trying to do some women's history pieces.
Okay.
Of course, the first woman, the first patent issued to a woman was from, was to a-
From Killingley, right.
A woman from Killingley, so, yeah.
Well, the first female dentist was also from Danielson.
Didn't know that.
We have lots of, lots of historic things.
All right. Any other comments, questions from council members? Do you have any questions for us, or do you see any way that the council could support the Historic District Commission more?
I think we're doing all right. I mean, I'm not so up on all the modern technology, so I'm trying to learn how to do that better. And so it's my hope that maybe there'll be some Historic District things even that could go on modern technology.
Okay. All right.
Because we've done the brochure, and I know Terry Barton, our chairman, is much more sophisticated with computer technology than I am, and so I think she has a couple other ideas that will be in the works.
Okay.
Can I ask, Ms. Weaver, have you talked to Claudette over at the library?
Excuse me?
Have you talked to Claudette over at the library about maybe-
As far as what?
Helping you put things more modern, like the records and things? Have you talked to her about that?
Well, we have had to, at the, for the Historic District, we haven't, because it really, from what I can see with Historic District, it doesn't match up with the library. We are currently at the Historical Center, working with grant money. We've had, we're on our second grant, and so we've been upgrading our technology with that for the Killingley Historical Center. We're two different entities.
Right, but it would be nice to work together if you're, you know, possibly.
But they have two different purposes.
Yeah.
The Historic District really has oversight of the exterior changes of the buildings.
Yep.
People do, people do come to the, they mesh when people come looking for historic information about the houses.
Yep.
Now, I believe it started in the 80s and went through the early 90s, the town had enough money to have Historic, to have surveys done from what was then the Connecticut Historical Commission.
Yeah.
And at that point in time, all the old houses were surveyed. Now, of course, this is 30, 40 years, so the number of houses that would be eligible now would increase, but if a house had been, say, sited or significantly changed, it wasn't included in the survey. But we have, I believe, eight volumes of surveys. Some of them, I believe, are here in planning and zoning. We have a copy at the Killingley Historical Center, and the town library has a copy. And we do have people come on a regular basis and ask if their house is historic and is in that. I mean, it would be nice down the road to list all these on the website.
That's what I was referring to.
Right.
Helping you with the documentation.
But that wouldn't come under the library, that would come from-
No, I know it wouldn't come under the library.
Right. It would be something that would be-
I meant working with them. Do you have a lot of information on the older cemetery, so the Civil War and things like that? Do you have information?
The Historic District Commission really hasn't done much with the cemeteries.
Oh, okay.
I would have to check the regulations and see. I don't think they come under-
So they don't?
I don't think so. No, Mary, no.
You saved me a trip.
No.
Thanks.
And I will say Jill Sinclair, in her Economic Development Director, she's been working with the Historic, Historical Society on getting the grant funds to assist them with doing some of that digitizing and trying to, you know, give them some opportunities around, you know, working through website and stuff like that. So we have been trying to partner with different departments with them.
During the Depression, there was a project that was done under the auspices of a man named Hale, and now it's referred to as the Hale Cemetery Collection, and I believe many of the towns in Connecticut were surveyed. Killingley had 73 known cemeteries, and this is just in what's Killingley now. We're not talking about the part of Killingley that we lost to Putnam and Thompson. So, I mean, there are a lot of cemeteries. It is online. Some of the cemeteries have very few people in them. Some are larger, like, say, Westfield, and, but it is online if you're interested in different.
Yeah.
The Hale Cemetery Collection.
Right, and I've been through all that. I just didn't know how much data you guys have, if you have any, on Westfield or the others.
Well, we have cemetery information, not in with the Historic District information, but over at the Killingley Historical Center, and we have it for a number of towns in northeastern Connecticut, because people are back and forth.
Right.
I just got a subscription to the Rhode Island Genealogical Society, and I had done a presentation for them last year, and there are so many people from Rhode Island that come to Killingley, so I thought it would be wise to have their newsletter and everything so we would know what was going on and have access to their information.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I need to be here?
No, you do not need to be here.
Because I have to come on thirsty for our public hearings.
Moving on in the agenda, next item up is 3B. Dana Hopkins is seeking reappointment to the Agriculture Commission. Glasses are not on yet. There are currently one regular member and two alternate vacancies available. The regular term runs for three years. The available terms would run as follows, from November 1st, 2020 through October 31st of 2023. And Mr. Hopkins is seeking to be appointed as a regular member, so I won't go over the alternate terms. And Mr. Hopkins, welcome.
Hello.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking appointment?
We run a farm on Route 101 in Daville. Spent the last, being an alternate, and figured this lack of any kind of people wanting anything to do with the commission is probably a good thing to go for a permanency.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I just wanted to say welcome. You're a-
Yep.
I just wanted to say welcome. You're a great, oh, you're a great addition, and yay, farmers! And Hidden Hollow has the best pork chops on 101 that you will ever taste, and I didn't know if you wanted to say something about volunteers for your haunted house while you're in a public setting?
We were kind of planning this coming year to do some sort of haunted trail, kind of like there used to be at Owen Bell Park, and we were talking at one of the meetings about maybe like voag volunteering or something I think would be good for the town, because it was always a big hit back when that went on back then, and it's something we've been kind of thinking about doing.
Any other questions, comments from council? Do you have anything for us else? Any questions, comments?
Not really.
Okay. All right. We'll be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item 3C. Chris McDonald is seeking appointment to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission.
Hello, how you doing?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
So right now, there are currently three regular member and two alternate vacancies available. Regular terms run for three years. Available terms would run as follows, from May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2025, and from May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2023. And you are seeking appointment as a regular member.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Tell us a little bit about yourself and-
I served on conservation in town, just about two years I started as an alternate, then I was made into a permanent member. Learned a lot in conservation, a lot of our trails I've been to, you know, quite a few on my own, and Donna is phenomenal. I mean, the dedication she puts into it, and I've talked to her a couple of times, but I think it's time for me to start moving on to another commission, and I think with the wetlands, you know, look into that, better suited for it. I did, I come from the town of Beavon many years ago. I was Board of Public Works Commissioner, I was elected position. So as that, I had conservation, I had wetlands, I had planning, engineering, I worked with everyone, sewer and water, DPW. So I'm just trying to broaden my horizons. You never know, maybe one day I'll be sitting up there with you guys.[987.43][987.43](laughing) Not, you know, I'm not saying like tomorrow, but maybe in about five, six years. Right, Ed?[994.43][994.43](laughing) It's basically about it, about me. I worked for the Housing Authority, the maintenance guy. Been in property management most of my whole life, family business, then I worked for a couple of private firms up in Boston, I was director of facilities for Rhode Island Hospitals, so I've been into it all, so.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council members? Mr. Grandowski?
He's going for the conservation commission, but he's not, he's jumping from one ship to another.
Yeah.
It's good, that's fine.
Mr. Wood?
Has nothing to do with inland wetlands, but-
Good grief, now's my turn, Michelle. But you said you're the maintenance guy for Housing Authority?
Yes.
I asked this a few years ago, can there be a sign up over on Maple Courts, the points of the Maple Courts 2 building, that appoints to what apartment numbers are which there? Because for fire EMS sometimes, especially when you get a lot of newer people, they don't know that the lower apartments there on the big main building, that there's only certain amount there, and then the rest of them are all up top.
I would talk to Carol Green, she's a director. You know, I basically, I'm one of the maintenance guys by primary focus on, you know, we have an apartment, so we doing it. I would talk to Carol about it.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring it up again.
I'm still learning where I'm going with that. In the big building, I think I'm, this one, I give up. Just walking circles.
Fair enough. Yeah, no, just something that came up on my mind when you mentioned that, I figured I'd say something. Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments?
I remember when I was looking over my pack, and I said, "Oh, he's kind of doing a lateral, he's just kind of shifting." But I mean, it's for a good commission, and I mean, obviously, it sounds like you have a lot of experience that, I mean, we can't get any, we're looking to bring in business and commercial, you can't get anywhere unless you have enough for inland wetlands, and so progress can't move forward if we don't have that board staff, so I'm-
And I do want to protect the wetlands, too.
Oh, absolutely.
When I was in the town of Beavon, I seen some stuff, it was-
Yeah, what we did in the, what we did in the past is not, not-
What we call backfilling of wetlands to put up a building.
Yeah.
But I am to protect the property.
Yeah, what we used to do years and decades ago is not too good. We figured that out.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? On behalf of the council in the town, I just want to thank you for your time that you served on the other commission and looking to move over to this one, and we'll be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item four, citizens' statements and petitions. Ms. Gloria, do we have anything submitted by email?
We had none submitted.
Okay, thank you. At this point, if anyone would like to come forward and speak, you can come up to the microphone and speak. Anything you talk about has to be related to items on tonight's agenda, though. Last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Item five, old business, we have none, so we'll move on to item 6A, new business, meeting with WPCA and staff liaison, Dave Capashian.
Thanks for performing other duties right now.
Need a bigger table.
Everybody just loves coming up to that mic.
So I know you had the main project pretty much wrapped up at this point. What do you have new on the horizon that's coming up? And what have you guys had going on down there?
Looking at doing some INI work. We've got a project that's kicking off the roof in the HVAC building on the admin building, which was cut out of the original facility upgrade. So we're looking at, you know, doing those types of things that were cut out. Doing some work on the I-Park pump station, some work on some sewer lines on the other side of Maple Street. Money, provided we have enough money, we'll continue our Prospect Street adventures, continue with the next phase over there. And we're looking at, you know, maybe pursuing the possibility of a project where we could increase our capacity at the facility. Pretty much it in a nutshell, I guess.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, we want to address the INI stuff, you know, we had a study done, we had a INI infiltration and inflow study done last year, last fall, I think it was early fall it was completed. We have a lot of infiltration in the sewer lines, they're old, and a lot of them run along rivers, which are susceptible to inflow, so we want to start tackling that, and that'll also help with the capacity issue somewhat at the plant, too. So we won't be treating clean water, and that's the goal.
Yeah. Okay. Any-
Well, we had a big change at the plant this past year. I mean, we went from, back in 97, we went to contract operators, and, you know, 25 years later, we went back to town employees running the plant. So, I mean, that's a huge change, because, you know, from just relying on a contractor to having town staff run it. And that's been a very smooth process, thanks to Dave, mostly, and, well, and our operator, our level three operator.
It was a team effort, we called town staff.
I'd like to speak to that as well. So our facility is classified as a class four treatment plant in the state of Connecticut, and when we switched over from contractual operations, we lost our class four operator. So now we have, the state gives us up to a year to get a contract for operator to run the facility. That was last July, we're now almost in, you know, in March here, and we've made no progress on securing a class four operator to operate our facility, so that's a big priority for our treatment facility.
And just the, another input on that, the WPCA is submitting a letter of support looking to request the state to provide a class four operator license to our class three operator. So Joe has been an operator of our plant for 30 some odd years. He was with us prior to going to contract operations, through all the contract operations, and then coming out the other side, and he's very well qualified. He's sat for the exam several times, but, and he continues to do so. And so it's, you know, he, so we are, they have drafted a letter of support, and that will actually be looking to come before you for also supporting that effort to the state and seeing if the state will grant him a class four, even a provisional license just for Killingley. But with that, we have continued to advertise and market for a class four wastewater operator. There's just, there's not a lot around, there's not a lot around in the state. We have conducted a few interviews, but they were unqualified for the position, and so we've had to continue to do the job search. And so we're hopeful that we'll make some progress with the state in securing that and getting some level of cooperation with the state with regards to the class four operator. They're well aware of Joe's talents and the level of ability that he has, so we're hopeful that there will be some consideration there, but also, they're also well aware of how difficult it is to bring on a class four operator throughout the state, so that it's, you know, it's not necessarily a new conversation at the state level. But I understand the WPCA's frustration level around this and their urgency, as all of us have that same urgency, of trying to make sure that we are, you know, class four operator is secured and onsite, so we continue to take all efforts to try and secure one and get one onsite.
I'd just like to add one thing to that. Having a technical background, and I do an automotive, two of the best mechanics I've worked with in over 30 years struggled to get ASE certifications. So just because someone doesn't have a certain certification doesn't mean that they're not the most qualified candidate for something. I can definitely speak to that side of it, also knowing, because I did have my teaching certification at one point, that every one of us has different learning styles and different teaching styles, and sometimes, one thing I was taught when I was going through all my, all my teaching courses, was some people are the greatest hands-on, but you give them a written test, and they struggle with it. And like I said, two of the best mechanics I've worked with, they were, they struggle with the written tests, and that does not have anything to do with their ability to perform their job.
Not to say put anybody in any position, but class four operators required statutorily, and there's certain requirements. Between this town and the state, they put $20 million into that facility, so it's not, I doubt they're going to make provisions very easily, and that's the state requirement, so, and we really need to get a class four operator, so I think we should be exploring every avenue, including perhaps posting salaries, increasing salaries, what it takes to make that happen. It seems to be, like, these days, it's hard to fill a lot of positions, but, and a lot of it's salary driven, so I think we can't, you know, really have our hands tied as to limits on salary in order to fill that position. As Joe said, it's a state requirement to have the class four operator, and they'll cut us some slack, you know, it'd be great, and I'm not, Joe is very qualified to run the plant, but we, you know, the state doesn't always take common sense and logic into consideration.
That's an understanding.
So that's something we're going to have to, you know, deal with, I think.
Can I ask a question? So come July, that's the deadline, what happens at that point if we don't have a class four or they haven't certified Joe?
Well, we might get an additional extension from the state. That's another option.
Or a violation.
Or we could have a notice of violation. Which just means we get a notice of violation. That we're in violation. We could potentially eventually receive monetary fines around that. But it could be that we're just in violation. So, it depends on what level the state decides to deem that violation at, right? And, you know, clearly, I'm sure they're going to look at the compliance of the plant and whether or not the plant is functioning and operation, operating within its permit limits. And, you know, if they're having cooperation from the existing staff within the plant. So all of those things come into factors around that. But we've been very honest with our conversations with the state up, up through this entire process. None of this is a surprise to the state. We've been very clear through our entire process. So it's not like we're, they're going to be blindsided on July 1, oh, what do you mean, you don't have, you know? And hopefully, that won't be the case. You know, we're all very hopeful that, you know, between now, you know, it is March, but between now and July 1, we'll have secured a class four operator, right? But in the instance that, you know, that doesn't happen, we continue on with, you know, obviously, the plant still runs. And we deal with the conversations with the state. And it, it may mean they either, you know, look at allowing us an additional extension or we get NOV, which the town has had NOVs previously for other things in the past that didn't result in monetary costs. But they were violations that we had to progress through to a resolution.
So, I, I don't know. I don't want to speak for you, but, so this is the first we're hearing of that. So can we just get an update, like, when that goes through?
I will. I will. Absolutely.
And I have a question. As a board member, I'm not familiar with the process that's been, I don't know the process, so if you could explain it, that'd be helpful.
The process for-
Can you explain to the state?
So, yeah, this is exactly what we've just got over, that we're, you know, advertising for a position, that we are, you know, we've been actively recruiting for positions, we've interviewed a couple of times, but unsuccessful in that.
And the board hasn't been updated on any of the interview process or any of-
We have actually. We have done that. And I understand, Joe. Joe, I understand that you've been upset that the board, you as a board member haven't been actually in the interviews themselves, but that is a process-
I actually never asked to be in an interview myself.
Okay, well, either way, the town has, we have, we have conducted interviews, as I have, you know, as staff has related to the WPCA in the past, we've conducted interviews. We continue to advertise for those positions.
We sent, we sent a letter to you from the chairman, asking that the chairman be a part of the interviews, so the board could have information about the process, could, you know, have some insight.
I understand that. I understand that.
So we haven't had any candidates in the past?
We have not had any candidates.
That's why we may need to up the ante, so to speak. If this, I mean, we've talked about, you know, submitting, you know, trying to get-
I think we have to go after all angles.
Yeah.
All angles. It's not just sinking it all into advertising and marketing for a position. It's about going after all angles and, you know, we've had, you know, I think the WPCA, we, at staff, we've had a lot of conversations around this topic. And, you know, it's challenging. It's frustrating on all sides of the fence, so.
We also haven't received a response to the letter.
I apologize. I didn't mean to. It's okay. I was just curious what's worst-case scenario. And in, in Mary's defense, and I think of the whole process, this sounds like there's shortages in this industry, just like there are with trying to find sanitarians for the health department, trying to find paramedics, trying to find, you know, transport companies. It's a, it's a broad problem that we have to address. And I understand where you're coming from with money, but that's not always the, I'm not saying there's not an issue around that, and when the budget comes out, we'll look at all that. But it's not always just the money. It's, you know, there's, that sounds like a very intricate job, and I mean, I don't know anything about that wheelhouse, but it, it sounds like there's a lot of uphill to get certification anywhere with the state of Connecticut.
It is, and I don't see, you know, to onboard somebody in three months is even a quick time, so we're really running out of time here. It's a professional position and probably would take somebody to transition or whatnot to onboard.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I've worked in sewage treatment for 50 years. I've had to fight for as long as two and three years to find the right operator, even though the plant has been very well run by the people that are here. And that's my observation here. It's very well run. But it's, the plant's not perfect. It has very limited capacity for growth, which is, at this point, a mistake that needs to be fixed. It's going to take a lot of money and it's going to take space away from some of what's on that site to make it work. I have been on the board for a year. My observation is the plant, in spite of everything that's wrong with it physically and everything that's discussed, licenses and whatever, is very well run. And I want you to know that. It's very well run. On some days, probably against the odds. Because of the tweaking that this operator knows how to do to keep it running well and keep it running within. I mean, I can't remember what I said. I had an operator that retired at a plant. Town called me in to interview people. Took us three and one-half years to find somebody suitable that would take the job. In between, we had a class three operator and discussions with the state and threats about action and all this other stuff. But even that plant ran very well. You have good operators at this plant. They take the job very seriously. It will be whatever it's going to be, because it's a very, very hard time to hire any kind of key help for anything. And I don't care what it is. So, the battle will go on.
My, because I'm, I'm a nurse and as an RN, there's, the state only allows LPNs to do so much, even though I've worked with a lot of LPNs that are more qualified than some of the RNs I've worked with. So, class three, class four, what's the major difference between?
To be honest, it's unclear.
That's it? It's just the test?
There's experience as well.
Wow, yeah, yeah, job experience. It's, it's, it's the same thing with paramedics. An EMT has to have so many years on before they take, they move up to medic, usually.
Anybody that has the license thinks they can call the shots on benefits, work, form, where they work. This, I almost turn down jobs now because I, I get mad at people that are so arrogant that they look to see how much more they can get than what's offered in order to get a position. And then at the end, I don't want to work in that town anyway. And I've had that happen three times. They never intended to work there. They just wanted to see what they could ante up the job they already had. And that is really a bummer to deal with.
It is. It is.
So, but if we could go back to the capacity issue, change the subject. So if we were going to do some expansion, we would probably need to take over the Little League Field area. And I know years ago, when the town got the Davis property, that was one of the, the, you know, we had concept plans that we drew up to move the Little League fields down to the Davis property. But unfortunately, now, that space, we, with the gravel operation that's been going on down there for so many years, that's eaten into some of that prime area where the fields were going to be. And the way that that's left is not conducive at all to any kind of ball fields or any kind of recreational fields because of just the poor soil that's put back in. So, we, we really can't. If we're going to be expanding the plant, we need to think about where the Little League Field is going to go. And not ruining the land where potentially that's going to go. I just had to get that into.
Thank you. Mr. Grandowski.
This is a very critical entity in town.
And your Mike.
Mike.
Critical entity in town. All our industrial fluent goes through there. If we want to, you know, invite more industry or attract more industry, we're at the, just about at the capacity level, so that's an issue. And again, class four operator is a big issue, you know, you know, with the switchover, this transition, okay, I think we knew going in that it might be an issue with a class four. We've got to deal with it. So there's a lot of action going on down there that's associated with the plant. You know, the, the INI study, we've seen infiltration coming in when, I guess at, at our last meeting, it was, our normal flow's around 3 million gallons and all of a sudden, on the high rain days, 6 million, you know? It's like, a lot of things are going on, so we, we need things done. And, and then it's also at a cost. We, we, where, how do we fund some of this? You know, if, if we can get more money from the feds or somewhere from the state, it would help. Pretty much, we're using user fees right now to keep this thing going. We did get, when we did the upgrade, there was money with that. There was grant money, low-interest loans, but we still didn't have enough. We're still going to do the HVAC in the roof, which wasn't enough to cover, we got the major flow areas in the plant taken care of. We'll look at some of this other stuff that we can put off a little bit, but we can't. So there's a, this is a, a high-cost issue down there that somehow, I don't know if on the town side, we can support this somehow. Where, where can we move some funds around to make most of these other things going? Pretty much, money is, is, is everything except the class four operator. Well, even then, that could be, if we can't get candidates that don't want to, that are not, don't want to come forward with the salary that's offered, that's, again, how do we make that work? I, it's, it's a, these guys have a rough job right now. There, there's a lot going on with the plant. And we, we have no operating issues. Everything is working. We, I don't know when the last notice of violation we had, it's been a number of years now. So, given the circumstances, even through the upgrade, everything worked. So, and to throw these burdens on, we got through all that, now we still have these burdens to take care of.
Now, Mary, is there a way you can keep the WPCA a little more informed during the interview process?
We have been, and we will continue to do so.
However, however they've been.
We will continue to give reports through the staff.
The reports I've received going to every meeting have been limited, and I've attended every meeting in the last year.
Being as, if I may interject, being as I give those reports, I report the action that has occurred. I cannot make out something that has not occurred.
Sure, and you're not involved in the interview process or anything?
Actually, he is part of the interview process.
I thought he was.
I didn't even know that.
Very, very much so. And again, we have, this has been as transparent as we can possibly make it. And everything that has occurred from user applicants, I've not told you details, nor should I, nor am I going to, as far as personal issues. But every time we have had an applicant, we have been informed at every meeting.
Mr. Wood.
I have a few questions here. More so for my own education on this here. I know you mentioned the difference between a level three and a level four operator being just a test there. What's the difference between a level three and a level four facility, though? Is my, my next question, or is that a very long explanation?
It's the treatment range.
Okay.
So, the types of treatment and the, also the capacity.
Okay. And also, I know you mentioned this multiple times, now, INI, what, what exactly is that?
Infiltration and inflow. So basically, water comes into the pipes, if there's cracks in the pipes or, or the sore manholes, whenever we get a rain event, that water infiltrates into our collection system and we're treating it at the facility, which is actually a cost to all the users because we're treating basically rainwater and that, and that's a cost. So, we did a study on this to remove the INI, but we haven't actually implemented the study to do the work to, to re-line the pipes and redo the manholes to help get the IIO. You won't get 100%, but you, you know, you tackle priority areas and, and that's what we should be working on harder so that, you know, it would reduce costs for treatment at the facility and better off for everybody. And also, if we get a more level flow instead of these peaks when, when we get rain events, then we'd have a better capacity understanding and we could increase capacity at the facility as well.
Thank you. I actually appreciate that explanation.
Some of that, and do you want to bring that up, about the INI with the, some of the relining that we've already done?
Sure. Just to give the update on some of the INI work that's occurred since I've been here. There was an inflow and infiltration study done in the early 2000s. We identified 10 miles of the worst areas based on that original facility study. And part of the USDA projects, I'm not sure if everybody remembers that, which occurred around 2012 to 2015, I guess. We did Garage Street, Center Street, Cottage Street, Maples, parts of Maple Street, parts of Main Street, North Street. I think those are the high points of it. Anyway, just about 10 miles of sewer line was either replaced or re-lined. And again, those were the worst areas that were identified. And we essentially noticed no difference at the plant and our flow. I'm not saying the peaks weren't adjusted during rain events, but our average daily flow certainly did not diminish. And we did do a second facility, we did a second INI study, which addressed the areas further along the interceptors and other areas of town. And that was completed a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, I guess. We built money into the current year's budget to address some of those issues, but due to cost overruns, not overruns, but cost increases with other projects, I was reluctant to put in RFP or bid out for that work. I wanted to see where the HVAC group project would be at the admin building. And as it turned out, that pretty much ate up our capital reserves that we had allocated for INI for this current year. In the present year budget, we're carrying $300,000 for INI work. As you know, that has not been approved at this point. And $300,000, quite frankly, are dropping the bucket. The INI report that Ray Pierce has completed for us, the second one, identified a cost of just over $2.1 million. And to do the work that has been identified and, and I expect costs have gone up since then. INI is very important. I probably agree with that. But as Joe said, is, you're not going to gain capacity from INI, you're going to level up your peaks. Your average daily flow is not going to decrease significantly because what happens is your water, whatever your water level is, if you replace the main, which is fine, you replace that, you stop that crack, you stop inflow and infiltration at that point. But the laterals that go from the road to the houses are the same age. And you still get infiltration from there if the water level rises. When we did the 10 miles of USDA projects, we found storm drains that connected, which were disconnected. We found some root leaders, connections of all sorts that we, I was in people's basements, disconnected them. And again, whether they reconnected them after I left or not, I can't say. I have not gone back in to inspect them. But talking to other municipalities and other engineers and contractors that deal with this, it's very difficult to gain any capacity from an INI project. It is a very important project because it does level up the peaks, the flows. But this past summer was the driest year since I've been alive, anyway. And we've still had capacity issues at the facility. Again, I'm not saying, I'm not degrading- Again, I'm not saying, I'm not degrading its importance because it was very important, but it is not the goal, so before whatever body is hoping for. I felt the same way myself when I first started looking into it, but the reality of the good work, though.
Just wanna make an updated correction. I didn't say you can't. You can substantiate some more capacity if you do bring your peak flows down, and you don't go a certain peak, above a certain peak, that can be done. It is hard. Like he says, $2.1 million, I don't see us taking on that entire chunk. But if we go down the priority list and start and, you know, take a few off, that's, I think that's the correct way to do it, not to tackle it all, tackle it all at once.
In the first study that we did in 2000, that was not the whole town. That was very limited to concentrate on the borough, because that's where the expectation was that there would be a lot of interconnections with the roof leaders and everything down in the borough area.
That is correct.
So, that, it wasn't, this last study that we had done was more all encompassing of the entire collection system.
You did still show that you had what's your highest infiltration.
When was that last study done?
A year, a year ago.
A year ago, okay, okay. So fairly recent. And, you know, I will say, just to kinda, a little bit backtrack, but not go back down our rabbit holes here. A few things about salary, you know, salary absolutely is, you know, I'm somebody that's hiring people, you know, and looking at that. Salary for younger people is far more important than for those of us who need insurance and things like that. That's, you know, anybody over the age of 26, so I'm not saying that's for the old people. Because I'm 33 and I need insurance. So, you know, that's one thing that we obviously do look at, is that salary is important, and we, that would benefit, things like that as well. I'm assuming the town has decent benefits, so, full package, they have a great, great thing. So that is another, obviously, thing that attracts people. And as someone who lives in the borough, whether you got a level three or a level four operator, I gotta say, you guys are doing a great job, because I don't have a problem, so.
Ms. Murphy.
So I have several questions. With the INI, Dave, like you have a plan to actually start fixing some of them, or are you still doing the research?
Did the stuff that we could do in-house last year.
Okay, so this year is the same thing, $300,000 to fix whatever street you have on the. Yep, cool.
Last year, we didn't do anything out of capital project.
Okay.
Again, just what we could do in-house.
Yep, yep, very good. The letter for a waiver, is that coming before us just to sign off on, or are we writing one?
So, in your packet for next week, we're gonna be looking for the council to provide additional support to the letter that is being current, that's already drafted by the WPCA, so we'll be adding the town council's support to that.
Okay, so I'll address that next week, or is it next Tu, yeah, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, yep.
I'm not even gonna say it, next Tuesday. You can, you can dress her up, but you can't take her out. In terms of the letter that they wrote, I would personally, when I read the ordinance, it says that staff is in charge of hiring, but with the consult of the board, so whatever requests they made, which I'm not privy to, I think it should be honored out of respect. And that's my take on it. I don't know all the details, Mary, but I don't like to see the board unhappy, honestly, because they're supposed to have a say per the ordinance that I read. That's all the questions I've got for now.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Mr. Grandowski.
So, looking at the increased capacity, the dollar figure, is there some kind of, where in the sky are we looking at for?
How about 20 million?
That's what we need to know. That's, that's, you know, we're looking at 2.1 million for the INI to start that work, 20 million on capacity. This is, that's why this is a tough, how do they operate within the small constraints of dollars that they have? And they're doing a good job. Their budget is there. They never overextend their budget. They're always within that constraint. And like I said, how do we, how do we get there more, more, more dollars for this?
I know we've discussed before, looking into the capacity issue and seeing what kind of federal aid or grant money we can get for the capacity, for any capacity increase. Any other thing to consider, too, is 20 million this year, by the time the project starts, five, six, seven, eight years down the road, we could be looking at 30 million at that point, the way inflation's going right now. So, even a 20 million figure now pulling out of the air, it's, it is what it is. And that's one thing that everyone has to realize, is when you're planning stuff that far down the road, and we saw it with the KMS project, where things happen, inflation comes in, other scenarios, whether it's supply chain driving pricing up, or whatever you have. It's difficult when you're planning a project that far in ahead to, to put any kind of figure on.
It's just that it's not 5 million, it's not 100,000.
Yeah, yeah. It's a big number.
Very big number.
Yeah.
And so, I remembered my other questions. There was one about the capacity study it did in the past, didn't it come back at 80 million? Was that correct? I don't know why that number's in my head, Dave, your last capacity study.
Say that again, I didn't hear the number.
Did it come back at 80 million, your last one?
When we did the facilities upgrade plans, at that point in time, I asked for an estimate, and keep in mind that was a grab, about a penny or estimate for adding a whole nother treatment train.
Okay, yep.
And we came back at 80.
I had a curiosity, too, like, are we in negotiations with Frito-Lay at the moment, like, we're coming up to that, or no? Because I kinda wonder if you couldn't make as part of the negotiations to mitigate on their end, because that would give you some capacity. And the last thing I wanna say before I forget, and it may not be possible at all, but was about the INI. You don't always, you might, you definitely straighten out your peaks. Sometimes what happens is, because you're not having the dilution, your pounds and your loading actually gets worse. So that's not a guarantee, anyway.
No, I do have one question. I don't remember the exact figures that were thrown out back when the whole NTE project was proposed. The capacity studies you've had done, did that include capacities that were projected for NTE? Okay.
I'm going back in my memory banks here, but I believe because of not part of the pumpers, not discharge, that was that allowed NTE to come in. That was the process at that point.
Okay, because with the fact that at this point, NTE Energy doesn't even exist as a company, I know that's something that.
That I couldn't say.
I don't foresee that project coming forward anytime soon.
Now, this is, I mean, not to belabor the point, but even in periods of normal flow, we are having problems with solids, primaries tank washing into our second givers, and we have to recycle them back before we have a discharge to our blurring contacts, or discharge to the river, which we don't want.
Yeah.
And that exacerbates the flow at the headworks and the velocity and the pressure to push the solids off the tanks. So, the guys are in a constant battle.
Now, I remember from back when my time was liaison to WPCA, the numbers for the septic haulers that were coming in had been constantly decreasing. Now, if those numbers came up, is that something the town could handle? Would that be a detriment to the facility?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I don't see those numbers coming back at this point. And even if they did, it's not the easiest retreat, but I think we could handle it at the volume that we were receiving before. I said that.
I know, I know one hauler really well, and he drives quite a ways to get rid of his tank.
Goes wherever it's the cheapest.
Motville and Hartford is what he keeps telling me.
And we have looked into the cost, what actually cost the treatment, and of course, every plan is different. Some plans want the septic.
Yeah.
We have a high inventory load and, as it is.
So, yeah, okay. I know the situation with Motville is they wanted to, due to the amount of water they're getting from RinWhitney Robertson, that they've got to treat.
So, it's my turn to pipe in here. All I'm gonna say, there's a lot of talk about licensing and capacity and all that kinds of stuff. Right now is the time, if somebody wants to come and take a tour, because I can point out the issues that are down there. Summertime is the best time, wintertime is the hardest time to run this facility. Because in order to get the microbiology to where we need it to be during the wintertime, it's just like, when you get cold, you have to put extra blankets on. We have to make extra bugs to keep those bugs that are in there warm, because the top layer of the water is the coldest, just like, you know, you always hear how it flips and everything. So now is the time to come down there, if you wanna actually see how this facility runs during the wintertime, where it's right on edge constantly. Because you can actually see where the sludge is in the different compartments at the end of the, at the end of the plant, not at the beginning, at the end of the plant, when we get a little bit of higher flows than we currently have, it pushes the solids all the way to the end of the tank, to where it's ready to escape. So that's, that's the problem that we have, that's there. So, the town council always says they're coming, the van usually shows up, they drive around the gate like this and right back out. That's usually, that's usually the way that the tour goes. So, if you wanna come down there, whatever time you wanna come down, I'll be willing to give you the tour and show you how the facility is actually running.
Where do you keep your blankets at, Joe? I'm just curious.
We try to keep them mid-range, about, well, during the summertime, about 12 inches. Right now, they're about 60. So, it's, it's a big, the tank really, right now, is about three-quarters full of sludge, where it should be a quarter to a third.
I do remember roughly two years ago, we went for a tour of the facility.
I remember the eighth grade tour, thanks, now.
But if you guys come down for the tour, we do have some poop emojis that you can go home with. They got a smiley face on them, and there's no odor.
I saw one in Mary's office, it's great.
I didn't make it into the building, I waited outside. But it's not, it's not even that it's the plant, I can't even look at, like, the slime in my dog's bowl. I have a very weak stomach, it's like, I just can't do it. But all of you should go, and somebody videotape and bring it back for me.
And I'll get a jar of the air so you can smell it, too. I'll get a jar of the air so you can smell it, too. Now, is that something we could schedule for a weekend? Because I know a lot of us do work during the week. Okay.
On that note, there used to be, one of the teachers that is now retired, she used to bring her class down to the sewer plant. And afterwards, they really enjoyed, on the way down, you'd get it, oh, they didn't, you know, they were making all kinds of jokes and whatnot. But after they saw what happened down there, it was really an educational experience. And, you know, I would see her now and again, and she would talk about the kids. They would ask her, they would ask her more questions after the fact, because it's a little bit tough with you guys, there, you know, they sort of wanted to get out, but they were intrigued, but they would ask her things, and it was a very positive experience that, as a, maybe you wanna, maybe, you know, you could be a class four operator down the road or something, you know? She would throw that out, or whatever, you know, if you, this, you can use that as a career. You would think, who in their right mind, a kid in the eighth grade would think being in a sewer plant is a career opportunity? And that's there. But I think, I don't know how we, as the council, how we could, you look at everything that's going on down here, there's a lot of action that needs, that needs our support. How we go about it?
And so, you know, one of the things that the council may participate in is if, you know, they do go after, you know, federal grant funding or airmark funding or something like that, perhaps the council provides letters of support or, you know, petitioning our legislators for trying to advocate for that, for that funding. You know, that's, that's definitely an avenue that, you know, can go a long way by having more than just the WPCA members advocating for that funding, but also the town council, and also, you know, it is a regional plant. It provides treatment to Brooklyn, but also there is one facility in Pomfert that is still connected. It's been vacant for a long time, but it's still a facility that could eventually reconnect. So, it is a regional, and to, you know, seek that support from all those other entities is important as we move through, because as we all know, this funding comes around once every 40 to 50 years. It doesn't come around every, you know, you know, every other year. And so as, as the WPCA begins to seek out that, it may go a long way to have council letters of support to go with that, council members and collectively the council for that. So, we may be coming to you for that and asking for that support as, as the WPCA moves forward with looking at and investigating those.
So, Mary, that would be one more reason to push NCOG to get that SEDS report evaluation done, correct?
Yes, that, because the, in the federal level.
That's a very important piece in all of this, for the federal grant money, correct?
Yeah, having that identified in the SEDS report, we, we had been instructed that that would be important at the federal grant level, that that project be listed in that SEDS report, which is the, it's an economic development plan for the region, that that's identified. And so we've been trying to communicating that to NCOG, they're the ones developing that plan. For those of you around the table that don't know where the SEDS plan is, and they will be submitting that to the state on behalf of the region. So, Killingley, that's one of the topics that we have been pushing forward on that.
Now, is that something we could send a letter to NCOG on behalf of the WPCA to push them along a little bit?
The WPCA can, the town council can, yeah, and, you know, we've been doing that as well. Yeah, I can draft something.
And talking about economic development, have we, I don't know if Jill has seen anybody coming forward and looking to build a facility in town, if there is, what kind of discharge can we accept? I mean, they would have to provide some of that. Is there any of that in the works, is that? Or have we refused, has anybody been refused to say, we can't, because we have no capacity at the plant for your particular?
No one, no one's been refused, but there is no capacity.
Well, no, but that's.
So we haven't had any inquiries that we've had to necessarily decline and say that we can't fulfill it. Although, you know, I will say that Jill gets, you know, site selectors that are just asking for our demographics, right? Like, what do you have, what is your, you know, what capacity levels do you have available at your wastewater treatment? And we may never know what development they're potentially even looking at, or what potentially development they're looking at trying to cite. And we may never hear back on contact for that. So to say that we've lost some because of, it's hard to say that. You know, it's hard to say whether or not we've been bypassed because of the, you know, because of capacity, or because of other reasons in those, because it's generic site selection, you know, questionnaires that come through, right? So, and we, you know, you know, whenever we have a development that is, you know, looking to cite here, you know, we always engage Dave and the WPCA immediately, so that way they can start, you know, going through, well, what type, you know, they can say, well, we're only gonna discharge this many gallons. Well, it all depends on, what are you discharging in that, you know? And so they begin the process of, what's the analysis of that, so we can really understand whether or not we can accept it or can't accept it, and whether or not there is a higher requirement of pre-treatment that has to happen before it can come into our facility. And so they begin that process. So, we haven't had to decline anybody that's gotten, gotten into that phase to say, you know, no, we can't accept you. But, you know, we do see that for the longevity of the towns collectively, Killingley and Brooklyn. If we are going to continue to have, you know, economic development and business growth within our communities, discharge is gonna become a concern, you know, 20, 30 years from now. And if we're not planning now for what, you know, potentially could be coming down in the, down in the future, we are gonna end up facing that very quickly, as far as having to, you know, essentially decline. we are going to end up facing that very quickly as far as having to, you know, essentially decline future businesses because we can't, we don't have capacity to accept. Because we can't, it's not just a matter of what's being sent down on a database, day-to-day basis, but it's also, there's reserve capacities. We have guaranteed a reserve capacity at some levels to certain, in, in certain instances. And so we have to be cognizant of that as well, you know, we can't overcommit the facility as well. So all of that has to get taken into account as we evaluate these. So that's the reason why you have to look at that. You know, it's not necessarily what we're doing this moment. What are we going to do 10 years, what's going to be potentially in our, coming to us in 10 years from now? Or what's potentially going to be 20 years from now? Because again, we all know infrastructure money doesn't come around, federal infrastructure money doesn't come around like this very often. And to be able to best leverage that.
I would like to add one more thing about that. As part of our original facilities study that was completed in 2012, if memory serves me right, they, like Pierce had done analysis or analysis, run models or scenarios, if you will, what our flows would look like up to and including 2035. Currently, we are at our max peak for, what they anticipated 2035 would be. Not our daily average, but our max peak flows and loads. So that tells you the direction things are heading. And that's why we're trying to take some corrective action.
Well, then, on, on another note, when the plant was built in the seventies, Rogers Corporation was a paper mill. They're not there anymore, but I guess Frito-Lay has sort of taken their place. So we, we had big capacity given the paper mill. So everything was, that's how many, yes, you know, 50 plus years ago. We haven't done any increase in capacity for a long, we, we've been lucky, like you just said about we're, we're looking at 2030 or 2035, and we're at that point now. But then again, what we're dealing with is something that happened 19, mid-'70, 1975. So it's almost like KMS, we put no money into KMS since it was built. Finally, we did, but to throw it out there that there's a time that you've got to look at. Oh, you know, the, same thing with the INI, that all that piping was done in 1973 when the, when the facility was built. So we've got to stop looking at.
A lot of the piping was done much earlier than that.
Well, right, I'm just, yeah, that part, but like you said, the borough was 100 years.
Your analogy for the, for the flows is correct, but it's two different processes.
Oh, right, no, but, yeah, yeah.
Because, I mean, we, I would take more pulp again, cardboard pulp, I mean, that would help out.
No, okay, no, well, that's, I, we need to hear that. But it was like, you, you looked at it, the physical facility was made way back then. And now we've got a long, we've gone and done it for, you know, 50, 60 years. And, well, maybe we should have started looking at this sooner. All, you know, hindsight, you know, is one thing, so, you know, we, we've got to be supportive however we, here, how can we support you guys? That, that's what we've got to look at now, that, because it's only so far that rate pay is, and, you know, how, how we can put seed money in or something. Where, like I said, the feds have some money, if we can grab it, how, how do you put that all together?
I was just gonna say, Mary, you probably already do this, you and Jill, but if you get your offer, like, to have them know they have to pay for the upgrade. You know, you don't, you do that already anyways, right? So you don't have to say, oh, we don't have any capacity. They say, if you want to come in, then you're going to pay for the upgrade, like I've seen that done.
So there is a limited ability in doing that.
Yeah, I mean, it makes it unattractive, I'm sure, to the thing coming in, but, yeah.
They're not going to pay a $20 million upgraded. And to be honest, the, it's not, it's not their sole responsibility either.
No, but it's a negotiating.
You can, we negotiate a lot through, through developers. But again, it, you know, this, this is more looking at the global. It's not just one business's responsibility to increase the capacity for our regional plant. So.
I agree, I've seen it done, that's the only way I can say it, yeah.
And Pat, I'm glad you mentioned about the Little League field. Whenever I throw that out a little bit, boy, I get some people looking at me. But then again, if, if that was moved, some of the kids talk about the smell down there.
Yeah.
They were at the Davis property, it's farther away. But to move something like that.
Costs money.
The town has to be aware that that's another issue going along with adding capacity to the plant. I mean, and it just, that's the way it is. I mean, what, was it a couple of years ago, there was an overflow or something that did affect the Little League field, that was a.
Softball.
Whatever, you know, I mean, and then, I mean, we handled it, it was, you know, but that's a reality. We're lucky, you know, nothing's happened since, you know, we avoided that sort of thing. So I guess, you know, maybe we've got to push the gravel operation, light a fire, get it done, or shut that off with, you know, that's something that we could maybe have to start looking at, you know, on this side. That, you know, move them, let's get the Little League field moved out of the way. So that's one other hurdle that you guys don't have to deal with. Well, you wouldn't have to deal with that, but I mean, it's, it's still there.
It's part of the overall logistics of it, part of the big picture.
And then you, we still have issues with the old, old Borough Plant that's still there. That's another, that, that's another cost that has to come into this that maybe way back when, when we rebuilt this one, they should have, hey, Borough, then take care of your facility, know what, we were nice guys and leave it there. And then Delta Rubber or Hutchinson was using some of that. So, yeah, okay, we're getting some revenue, but that's still an issue that we have, that we've got to get that taken care of.
Anything further?
I just want to say how much I, I appreciate all of your wisdom, honestly. It's a, it's a great board, it's a great team, it's a great plant manager. I, I can't say enough about it, honestly, all of you, all of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that, same thing, I mean, we don't have, very seldom a violation. I mean, it's, it's run, we, we're not in the front page of the paper, we used to be for a while. You know, we're not there, it's great. We don't need that any, we don't need any kind of negativity.
It's been years.
So.
That's not our goal.
No, I, no, we don't want that, I, I mean, if it's.
Thank you for noticing.
Or, you know, or if we get a front page with somebody, you know, some of the, the higher-end politicians, whatever it is, and they come in with a check, yes, that's fine, come on down. No, I, I think that there's, there's never too much of an issue. Well, there is, we have issues here, they're being taken, you work through these hurdles. So I appreciate all of that.
I want to say thank you for coming forward and, and meeting with us. Definitely been very informative and appreciate all the information you've given us.
And I'll be waiting on your call for the tour, right?
Yes.
A coordinator for your job.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm skipping that one.
I know you are.
If that's the case, then I'll go. If we get the budget, I'll go.
I think I could put like Vicks or something under my clothes.
All right, so moving on to the agenda, next item up is item 6B, new business, meeting with NDTH board representatives. Thank you for being patient. Welcome, and what do you guys got going on down there? Where do you want to start?
You can start.
I'll start in a sense, uh, my name's Sean Regan, I'm Killenly's representative on the board for NDTH. New to the board, haven't been to a meeting yet as a board member. Been to meetings as a resident, but not as a board member yet. But I was, we made aware of the issue with the increases mid-last week. And I've been digging into it, getting some history, getting, trying to find reasonings for the increase. Discussed it with David earlier today, talked to Heidi about it, talked to Eileen on the finance committee about it. Trying to get some backdrop on it all. The one thing I haven't heard yet is a really good viable reason for the, for that much of an increase. So personally, just seeing that kind of an increase on its face without any explanation behind it, I would disapprove of it. Just so the committee knows. David can probably dig into some of the more historical parts of it all himself. But I am going to Thursday's board meeting with the finance. I can't participate, but I want to listen, get some more backdrop on that. And I will be here next week also as well to listen in on that so I can make a good educated decision. I know there is some discussions in the background about getting that number down. Where that number comes down to yet is obviously still up in the air. But just so you know, personally, as representative of you guys, I'm not going to approve it, I don't say its value. And I do want to get some more information before any other decision is made.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see you.
Well, let me just, a little background and then I'll move right along. In the, a year, we're always a year behind on our census. Town of Killenly is 17,742. That includes the Borough. Town of every, there are 12 towns in the Health Department. Of those 12 towns, Killenly and Plainfield are the only two towns that get two votes because we're over 10,000 people. You get two regular members and an alternate. The Borough is a separate entity and they get one vote and an alternate also. So it's very, very important that all the board members show up to vote. Show up to learn what's going on and vote. If a board member from a town is not attending, it's up to chief elected official to go to the board and can, they can vote. So this is what we're, we're at. All right. For the last four years, when Timmy left, because of her job, I took over, I was vice chairman and I took over. So I've been chairman four years until eight months ago. I'm no longer the chair. That's fine. We've had some difficulties. The pandemic certainly threw it at us. We went from 12 people to 24 people, now we're at 21. Now the problem. When the pandemic hit, all of us kind of hunkered down. We didn't spend the money, we didn't go out to eat. And then when it seemed to get over about a year, a little more ago, people that were staying home started spending money, either on their houses, vacations. You saw a huge jump in building supplies because there was so much going on. There was so many building permits pulled, not necessarily. And one of the things I put on the agenda when I was chair, I wanted every town to see their building people or whoever in the town they could, chief elected, if you have complaints, bring it forward. You can't make an agency better if you don't know what's right and what's wrong. Didn't hear for very many. I heard from Plainfield three and two from Killenly and mainly because they weren't getting their permits, building permits in a timely manner. Now, moving on, what happened to us? A year ago and a half, when we passed our budget, the finance committee recommended 75 cents increase. The board, including me, took it down to 50 cents. Now, maybe that wasn't what should have happened. Because after that is when we had this huge influx of, of buildings that need to have their permits, their wells and everything else. All right. Then we lost a sanitarian. We didn't have as many as we had. Okay, who is, what is your priority? The priority is to keep as many people working as you possibly can. So therefore, the priority went to the building permits so people could still build and get their wells and their septic systems and, and all of this. We fell dramatically behind on our inspections and in restaurants, in beauty policy. We did cover this last year, we covered the Brooklyn Pier and the Woodstock Pier, and we got that totally done. I was there, I saw the inspectors. So now where is the, the problem that they are trying to address? The executive committee and the financial committee is going to be meeting again and talking about just where and how they could cut back on the per capita rate that their suggestion. The original suggestion was $4.01. I said absolutely no. And then it came back at $3.75 per capita. I abstained at that point in time because I wanted to see where the other members were going to come in. There was one no vote. So now we're up to the towns discussing possibly leaving. We have a lot of good people at NDTH, let me tell you. Very hardworking, worked a lot of extra hours that didn't get paid for. That's going to be one of our consequences. They're already talking about, you know what, looking for other jobs. So we have to be extremely careful how we handle this situation. We don't want to lose good people. We still got at least a year under our belt, if you don't decide to go somewhere else, that we got to run the facility. And get out to the 12 towns. So the difficulty is going to be, how much can we actually negotiate on the per capita rate? We know this coming year, three years ago, I was on the negotiating committee for the contracts, and the contracts are up. So there'll have to be some money in the contracts. Because that's same thing as everybody else. If you don't pay enough, they go somewhere else. And that's the bottom line. And to be able to get a chief sanitarian to sign off on all these projects. Now, we, right now, we have one and we have four environmental people that actually go out and do the work. But they can't sign off on it. It has to be the chief sanitarian that signs off on it.
Dave, Dave, quick question. Can the director sign off?
That's a very good question.
As a chief sanitarian? As the chief sanitarian, can the director sign off?
That's, I, I don't know that one for sure. There was a, six months ago, eight months ago, when it was brought to our test, our attention that we weren't getting our inspections done. I said, I see on television when the airlines can't get enough baggage handlers, the CEOs go down there and handle it. And so I suggested to the director that you go down and do some inspections. And at the last meeting that I was at, she said she was starting to do the inspections. We are really hurt. We can't get a person through the process. This is the other one. You think the water pollution control, getting a level four operator? It takes a year and a half to get a sanitarian if you can get the right courses through the state. You can get a, you can get a person off the street. Send them to your, send them to the state training facility to be a state cop. 550 hours, then come back here and do your hours with somebody else quicker than I can get a sanitarian. And you can't find one. We sent a letter to the state asking for help. We need the courses, we need to get this done. We want to know if, if Rhode Island or Massachusetts, if we could sign in a reciprocal agreement to use one of them in the meantime, until we could get one certified. Never heard back from the state. Never heard back from the state. So you see the predicament that we're in.
Dave, I'm a sanitarian. My understanding is, after they go through the coursework and after they do some shadowing with inspections locally, the state actually has to send out a state person for them to go and do, perform several inspections with the person before they actually get their sanitary certification, before they can actually be certified.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that for the last several years, the state was not sending anybody out to do the certifications at all, correct?
Right. So it even gets worse. If you think it isn't bad. You're a restaurant. The year comes up, and it's time that you have, you get your permit again. You send in your hundred and eighty dollars, you get your permit. You hang it on the wall because you're supposed to display it for the public. That doesn't prove that the building, the facility was ever inspected. I'm proposing, that I haven't got it through yet, that any time an inspector goes out to these establishments, they put a sticker or something on there showing that June or some month that they inspected it. You need to know. Why hang it on the wall that you're certified if you've never been inspected?
That's like.
And you paid your money, and you didn't get anything. Now, the other problem is that restaurants are supposed to have a certified person on staff. If you're running two shifts, you're supposed to have a certified person on staff. The restaurants are telling me they can't get those persons through a class because they, the state isn't offering it. I mean, it's just... Anyway, the bottom line is, we're going to have to look for some real, deep cuts that is not going to affect the safety of the people in the region. Eighty-seven, eighty-seven thousand people in our twelve towns. A lot of people think the inspections are too expensive. They're based on mileage out, the car to drive them out, the cost of the individual, and their overhead that we got to pay, thirty-five, thirty-eight percent. So that's where we're at. What the, what the outcome will be, I'm not going to get into dollar amount. That's the, the Executive Committee and the Finance Committee need to give something to the board. I'm only a board member now. I'm on the Personnel Committee. So when we get that number, and that's when we have got to do our work to see what areas there is a possibility of being able to shave down what we're doing. You know we're taking care of Putnam as far as the apartments for lead and water are concerned. We have inspectors that are going out for complaints. Killenly has one of the largest complaints. We probably do more work, I know we do more work in Killenly than probably four or five of the other towns. So it is here, it is necessary. But some of it somehow has to come into compliance with what we can afford. What you can afford, what I can afford. Because the last thing I said when I left this council was, keep Killenly affordable. So we have a lot on our plate, and there's a lot more I could talk about. I understand the director is coming next Tuesday. So it is your turn to see. I had her come when Pat Beckenhoff was here. I had her come when Sue was here, because I didn't like the increases that we were seeing. So I suggested to Mary, I think you should have her in, and they, you're paying the bill. You're paying the biggest share of this bill. And we're all here for one reason, the best interests of the people, the safety of all the people. Ask me any question you'd like.
So Dave, I, when, I was in the NCOG meeting, and so was Ray and Mary, when Sue presented to all of us about, you know, what's going on in the increase. And she mentioned that it's by law, it's by laws, whatever. So what I did, because it's a significant increase, I contacted the other nineteen House districts. And I, I, what, what is your take on what's happening across the state? Is it what you're saying, everything is short? I hate to put it out there, but I always do. Is it a leadership issue? Is it, you said you've lost three. You went up from twelve to twenty-four, down to twenty-one. I spoke with a gentleman.
But that isn't the money coming out of you supposedly.
No, no, no. I'm saying your, your people left. You had three leave.
Right.
A couple of different directors I spoke with, they said, you guys kind of steal workers from each other. Was that the case? Because you're so shorthanded, it's so difficult to find people.
That happens.
So is that what happened with you guys?
Oh, yeah. If we don't get our salary, it's just like your teachers. You can't get enough teachers. The beginning of this year, they didn't even have a Spanish teacher, three weeks before school started. They had all left for other parts. Why? Mainly because money. If you pay more in another district, why should I stay in Killenly and get ten thousand less? Unless you really love the town.
Now, you said Killenly had seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two people, right?
Yes.
Of the twelve towns, and you said we're the most.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Altogether.
Yes.
But you said Killenly has, we're very active with you guys, right? We're also the biggest town you service, aren't we?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought. And we're by per capita for every, so every person of your eighty-seven thousand, including our seventeen, seven forty-two, are paying the same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And because there's no really way of separating that out. A town like Union gets a hell of a lot more services than we do in certain areas, because they don't have sewage, and they, and they don't have anybody on wells. A lot of people, I would say, better than half the people in Killenly, I'm not sure, are on either wells or on the sewer line. So therefore, the Health Department isn't involved in those areas. We are involved in lead or no smoking programs and so on and so forth. And we do go after grants to help fund the agency, but those grants have to stay in the areas that you applied for.
The ongoing problem with, with staff leaving at NDDH has been there for a long time. When, I think when Bob Young put me on, initially appointed me, we, we were, that's been the biggest problem. They, they come in, they get all their certs, and then they leave. You know, it's probably for money. But yeah, they come in, they would get all their training, they start settling in, and then they would leave. That's.
But we have a lot of dedicated staff.
Oh, yes. The ones that, that have, I think it's what you said, they care about where they live, and they want to live here, and they want to make it the best place for them to live. That's why, I think, I think, I think that's true of any, I mean, look at Joe with, in the sewer plant.
But who would have thought it would be that difficult? When I was on, before, well, before you, with Pat Beckenhoff, they said we were falling behind. We went out and we hired a sanitarian. That was no big deal. And I put in the, in the, when we did the offer, that when the number of cases come down, in other words, we're not needed another sanitarian, that sanitarian would go. I believe in very tight budgets, and I don't think you should keep somebody on if they're not necessary. Our problem now is, we, we just can't get another sanitarians to come in and do the kind of work that we need to have done.
Now, now on your fees, I know when I was still on the board, we, we were adjusting them to keep the per capita down. We were adjusting it to, so that it was user-based.
Yes.
So are the costs comparable for, like a B-100 permit or whatever, a license? Those fees, have they been reevaluated?
Oh, yeah. In fact, it's last year, we got a lot of complaints because we went up on the cost for doing the fair inspections. We figured out the time that they spent out there going from business to business to check them out. So we increased that slightly. But we're trying to keep those costs directly in line with what it costs to go out there and service that person. And we're still, I mean, when I was there with Pat Beckenhoff, who died, I'm sorry to say, we were trying to still get all our paperwork computerized. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And we haven't got it all done yet.
Probably won't.
So what we're computerizing right now is just if you call up for something nineteen-seventy, a sewer system, and we can't find it, if we go and locate it on paper, good luck, then, then that becomes computerized. So you see, we have our work cut out for us. But it's so important, and those two towns that haven't been sending, I called them a number of times. I didn't get much of an answer. I have, yeah, two towns that haven't been sending anyone. And I really encourage the alternates to come. I want alternates to come and learn what's going on. You, you can't take over for somebody if you don't know. And last time I was here, I think the best thing that we have done in a long time is the staff meetings are videotaped so that the board members not be there and not be on tape, but they can review the tapes afterwards so they know what the staff is working on. Try to get them up to speed as much as you can. It's so difficult to find representatives that are willing to serve and get directly involved. The mud gets pretty deep.
Now, now, are your meetings still in the afternoons?
Say again.
The, your board meetings, are they usually still middle of the afternoon, like three o'clock?
Three o'clock. You think that's a problem? I could make a suggestion that we could change that. But you don't forget, the age of the people that we have that are representatives may not like to drive at night.
Well, my, I mean, when I started serving, I was still in my forties.
And you were the youngest one there.
Oh, well, I don't know, Doug was, Doug Porter was still on there. He's not that far away from my age, but, um, honest with you, I work, I work eleven to seven. I worked eleven to seven the majority of my, my career as a nurse. And three o'clock in the afternoon is like, right about the time I usually start to take my nap so that I can get up at ten o'clock and go in for eleven. So those, or, so what I was having to do was mess with my sleep just so I could make it. I mean, tonight's meeting, I know, figured we were going to go, it was going to be quite a discussion between the sewer plant and you guys. I figured I might as well just get ready for work and, because I'm probably going to have to leave and go to work afterwards, so. But yeah, I, sometimes that three in the afternoon, if you're trying to get some younger people, professional people, um, sometimes you, you might have to move that meeting to maybe even six o'clock in the evening.
So you know why Doug left, don't you?
I think there was a variety of reasons. And this, uh, it was, I think it was more personal, there was some personal stuff, and there, there was some conflict. And that, that was one of the reasons that I didn't really want to re-seek that in my work schedule. It was just getting too much.
And that blew up into three more board members leaving.
So I, I think, I think it goes back to what Patty had questioned, about if it's a leadership thing. And I think that's, that's been heading there for a long time. That, that was my biggest conflict every budget year. And we, and honest with you, we used to literally nickel and dime. We would be ten cents and twenty-five cents, and there was always that one push, but I need this, but no, that's not what you need, that's what you want. And so.
We had the reputation of the cheapest per capita.
Yep.
In the state.
We were.
That had organized a number of people in their department.
Mm-hmm.
And the number was four-fifty, if I remember, that stayed that way for years.
It, it inched up slowly but surely.
Right. And it has to, I understand.
Yeah, it does. You can't, you can't grow.
Now, I do have a question. So you had mentioned that the CEO can actually go and vote if the representative from the municipality is, can't make the meeting. As far as the Borough, is, would that still fall on the chairman of the town council? Or would that fall on the chairman of the Borough? Okay. Of the Borough Council? Okay.
That would fall on Heidi. Right? Because she was our representative from the, from the town, and then she left because of work and other things. And now she's in charge of the Borough, right? Yeah, so she could.
Okay.
A very good board member.
So she would be a vote, right? Sorry, interrupt. So Heidi would be a vote?
If the regular.
If the regular member didn't show.
Doesn't show. Okay. Thank you.
Is the regular member still Elaine?
Yes.
Yeah.
So she's there.
And we.
I am really trying to get at some of the other towns, is what I'm trying to really in.
The smaller population ones tend to not send. They, they were absent a lot, even when I was board chair.
You know, you know how difficult it is to stand up to the chairperson. You want to get along with everybody, and they don't necessarily. I, I'm, I'm a fighter. I don't make a lot of friends.
Me neither. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay.
But I say what's on my mind.
I was just saying, Mr. Griffiths, you're doing, you stand up for what's right for the whole town, and that's commendable.
Well, what's best for the NDEH, too. I don't want to see it go away. I think we have a lot of good people. We did a lot of good things during the pandemic. I didn't agree with the state on a number of issues. I didn't think they should have people over seventy have to go online to get their shot. I, in fact, I talked directly to the chairman, the commissioner. I thought it was wrong. And, and why shouldn't somebody sign up and have to go to know which a hotbed to get their shot? You know, and I suggested to the, to the Health Department, I think that we should run an ad, see if the towns would help anybody over seventy be able to find a place to get their shot without having to go out of the district. They put on the contact tracing, I think you've heard of that? That's if you got the flu, I was standing next to you, and I'm supposed to tell on you that you gave it to me. It didn't work. We had three people on that trying to do that, and that didn't work. So some of the things the state does, and we all realize, are not necessarily the things that work best in reality.
As far as the contact tracing, I remember I had called down the NDDH one, and first time I came down with COVID, because I had questions as far as returning to work. And they asked me my information, like, well, we don't know you have it. How come we weren't notified? Tested? Well, they didn't notify us you tested positive. And I'm like, nobody told me I was supposed to, and what I was informed was the place where I tested at was supposed to notify the Health District, and they never did.
You notify the Health District, the nurse in the Health District is supposed to notify back. And they may, they may, this is what really got me in the ordinance, they may refer to the person who you were next to. It didn't say they had to.
Yeah.
That's what made me very upset. Why bother go through this with a "may" instead of you have to?
Yeah. Yeah. One thing I will say, I'm going to make sure that you both have my phone number, because my understanding, we don't have an alternate representative appointed yet.
Correct. We do not have an alternate.
I'll make sure you guys have my cell phone number. That way, if one of you can't make it, reach out to me, and I will do what I can to get out of work early to get there.
It's going to be in April.
Okay. Okay.
But there are meetings between now and then where they're going to be trying to shave where they think they can.
So I believe I also can act in that capacity. I can act in that capacity.
Okay.
So if other, either one of them can't attend, I can act as a voting member.
Okay. All right.
I just want to make sure everybody, first of all, they all should be voting because they're spending the money.
Yeah.
But more importantly, we want to have all the persons informed directly of what's going on.
Yeah. Mr. Wood?
So, I mean, looking at this increase, obviously, I haven't disagreed with anything neither one of you have said. You know, and I've wrote a letter to Elaine Lipke as well. I've been talking with Representative Dolphinase. I need to make a phone call to Senator Summers as well, because a few things there that have really annoyed me is the fact that this proposed increase is a fifty percent increase over your budget. And you know, like you've said multiple times here, Dave, being responsible with the people's money and making sure that we keep things affordable. If the town of Killenly, you know, and I know Mary's not doing this, so before anybody freaks out, but if the town of Killenly decided to have a fifty percent increase in our budget, heads would roll. And, you know, that's where I'm looking at this, as a fifty percent increase, I'm not happy about that, to think about that, and on top of the, the attitude. To think about that, and on top of the, the attitude that we got from, and she's gonna hear a little bit of this from me for next week, so maybe this is a preview. But the attitude that we got was pretty much, you have to pay it no matter what, so tough luck.
That is in the regulations.
It is in the regulations. I understand that completely. But for the towns to not know about this increase until after January 1st, that, that's unacceptable to me. Because we, we didn't realize that. And then, of course, now we can't back out because we're now past January 1st. And I don't wanna see N D D H go away personally. I really don't, and don't take me wrong on that end. But to not, um, pretty much give the attitude of tough luck, you're gonna have to pay this, and to give the attitude of, um, and to just give a 50% increase and think that it's okay, that's unacceptable in my book. You know, and that's not keeping things affordable for everybody. You know, I, I definitely, I, I do take a lot of this to heart, you know, I, as I said to somebody recently, it's $66,000. In the grand scheme of the town's budget, $66,000 really is not a lot of money. However, it's $66,000 N D D H is asking for, on top of every other agency that asks for money from the town of Killingley. How are we gonna keep Killingley affordable if other agencies are keeping themselves affordable? And that's really what that comes down to. And again, I, I haven't disagreed with anything you guys have said. I, I think you guys are on the same page. But I definitely have a lot of frustration over this. I'm sure you can tell now.
I mean.
I have frustration.
I mean, we just, we just met with W P C A and we're talking about millions of dollars needed to keep sewer, which is drinking water. And $66,000 would, one might not do a whole lot for them, but it would get you closer to.
Correct. Well, and here's my other thing too, and you've kind of alluded to this already. You know, I'll use this example. This past Sunday, I had to work. I don't normally work Sundays, but I didn't have an employee, so I, I, as the boss, came and filled in. You've kind of already alluded to this. It seems like if you didn't have the sanitarian, and if there's something that the boss can do to help out, should be helping out. That's a leadership issue. It's not, you know, I don't ever look at myself, and I try to be as humble as I can. I don't ever look at myself as I'm better than that. Because the reality is I have no problem getting my hands dirty. And that's the same, good leadership has no problem getting their hands dirty.
Many years ago, we had a lot of sickness in the, in the, when we had a snowstorm. Town manager got behind the plow, and we got permission from the union not to grieve it because we were so short on individuals. So I totally agree with you. I, I always appreciated the boss the best, that if he felt he could do any job that I could do. I've asked my director that I thought four years ago, that you should be doing some of the work of a sanitarian. How can you actually judge somebody and hear their complaints if you don't in the ditch with them to understand what they're doing? It isn't fair. So we did some other changes. Before, if you had a complaint, you took it to HR. Well, the HR would take it to the director, and that was the end of it. Now it's changed. The HR hears the complaint, it goes to the, it goes to the department or, or Sue. It also goes to whoever the chairman of the board is. So there's a way of getting it. And then that person, either he can hear the complaint and try to solve it, or he passes that on to the executive committee, which would take it to the full board. We, we gotta understand that there are problems, and we need to work on those problems. We can't shove it under the rug.
And to touch base on Mr. Wood, and I'm sorry, but I can't see your name tag. Ms. Wakefield, as you kind of alluded to, the $66,000 is a lot smaller, under 20 million maybe. But we're not doing our job at the board if we just rubber stamp everything along the way. So we're definitely gonna be looking into it and try to cut that down as much as possible and keeping everything as safe as possible as well for the, for the public, so. That's my interpretation on it.
One question, do you want me back here next week?
You are more than welcome to come back next week.
Is that a yes or no? I don't wanna cause a problem, but if you want me here, I would like to be here.
I would love to have you here.
I would like to, I would like to see.
Yep, you're, you're, you're a Killingley, Killingley resident. You should.
It's a public meeting.
I know.
There's a difference between in the audience and at the table.
But, but I think, Dave, you gave some great historical look at things too, because it really did help to clear up some things that I didn't fully understand either. So I do appreciate that, you know, you, you brought that in, so that kind of gives us some of that look as well. Because I can understand, you know, I definitely respect the fact that, you know, you're looking for a sanitarian. You might have somebody that could be qualified for that, right? But the state's not offering you the classes to do it. So this is, you know, that, that's not on N D D H. That's on the state of Connecticut for failing to do that. And they're not just failing N D D H, they're failing other health departments throughout, they're failing the state of Connecticut themselves. You know, we need that. And so that was great information. I do appreciate you bringing that to the table. And I think that, you know, if there's some kind of clarification that needs to happen, it'd be great to have you here.
Now, one of the questions that, that I don't quite understand is when Sue was telling me, in order to hire a senior sanitarian, we're looking at 155,000 to 175,000. I can't believe that.
So I, you know, I spoke to the.
Bob Kelleher.
No, I actually spoke to the office of local health up at the state. And I did mention that I saw that in the minutes that they were looking at. That was the proposed addition for the personnel, which was the hundred, which was for the chief sanitarian at 145. And she did indicate that that is near to market range for a chief sanitarian. But given that we don't have our other sanitarian positions filled, and our director had the capacity as a sanitarian, she questioned whether or not there was a need to directly hire a chief sanitarian. But again, that was a, in a short conversation. She wasn't doing a lot of research on that, so, you know, there was, there were things that she was going, you know, that would be something for us to look at, you know? So there were some things, some questions that she had around some of that. But again, I had asked, in the N E C O G meeting, I had asked Sue for a breakdown of the payroll, just in categories. You know, how, you know, what buckets and how many positions that represented and what the total numbers were. And if there were proposals for new, new positions that were being proposed within the budget. Because she wasn't really articulating any of that in the N E C O G meeting at all on that presentation. She kind of went around about and finally did indicate that there was that one additional position. She called me about two weeks after that meeting and indicated that she was trying to better understand what I was asking for. I think we reviewed it again to go over, you know, that's what I was looking for, those buckets, and how many positions are in each of those buckets. You know, I don't, we don't, I'm not looking for the list, the name and, you know, the, the, the wage amount tied to the name. That's not what we're looking for, but just, you know, how many sanitarians are in the current year budget? And how many are in the upcoming proposed budget? And how many, you know, directors and how many, you know, office staff and all of that? You know, so we can have a better, more complete picture of what the office, of what the structure is. I still haven't yet received anything on that, so. So we'll, I'll, I'll request again and see if we can get another response on that, but.
But you also, we also look at who we have, and I don't wanna get into it. We wanna look at what we have to have in the community, or in the house we use. And we need to be cautious to look back, who we're gonna hire and fill that position specifically across. I don't wanna have a big part in this situation again. I think it's really the pandemic is bothering the citizens. And hopefully it would get much better in coming year. I raise the situation. Who do you think is gonna go out and start building a house when the mortgage rates are six and a half and seven percent? I don't see this what we had in a year and a half, a few years ago. I don't see it happening in this next year. It's a different world that we're going to be in. And up there, 87,000 people that are in this 12 town district. We only increased it 17 people over the last year. So we don't have a lot of people moving in here. But I would appreciate it. And really appreciate it. If you find it a problem, communicate it, marry, initiate it to us. We need to know if there's a problem from here, or if something is good. We'd like to, you know, advertise that in a meeting. But more importantly, you can't force a problem if you can't see it.
Mr. Griffiths, when is your, when's the next finance meeting?
In here.
When's the next finance meeting?
They're having one on Thursday.
So, so this is just, like I said, I reached out to all of the different.
But they have a regular board members that go to that. I wanna wait until they sift it out.
I just, I just wanna share something that I don't know if your whole finance committee is aware of. So like I said, I, I reached out and I pulled data from all other 19. If you look at this chart, now I don't have all of them here. I apologize. That's why I was late tonight. I wiped out my spreadsheet this morning and I had to scramble to get as much data back before the meeting as I possibly could, because I'm not tech savvy. So you'll see there's some missing here, but if you look at N D D H, the potential increase, the 375 compared to the other districts, a lot of them are flat. And then the other, the only highest one is 61 cents. So I want everyone to understand what, what she's asking is outside of even what's happening across the state. That's why we're so outraged by this number. And the fact that Mary asked, what are your sal, like, what are your buckets salary and stuff, and she didn't wanna answer. And then when we were asking questions in the N E C O G meeting, well, not me, but I was just listening astounded by the approach, by the wording, by the attitude. And she just kept saying it's the law, but that's not a legislated law. That's a bylaw of N D D H, correct?
For the carryover that you can't get out, yes.
So that was.
It was formed, the health department was formed in 1973. This is our 50th year.
So has it always been that setup with you can't, you can't get out of it for the following year?
I, I believe that came in before I came on with Petback and. It hasn't always been there to my, best of my rec.
Because just so, you know, there are some of us that are gonna be recommending somehow that our legislators change that.
Because you have to have enough money once you start in. We try to carry at least a three month moving forward in case of town. We had years when we had a couple towns that wouldn't pay. So you need to have enough surplus to cover those towns that, you can't be laying people off in the middle of the year because the town didn't be paying, so.
So to be clear, it is by legislation that the, that the community, in order to withdraw from the health district, by state legislation, the vote has to be made before January 1st for the subsequent fiscal year. And Jen, I'm like.
So that is by state statute. The portion about the town's committed responsibility around financial payment, that is in the bylaws of N D D H. So the bylaws of N D D H by our membership into N D D H and our agreed board member representation, we agree that by providing the board representation, that our board members, when they vote on that budget for the N D D H, they are committing the town financially to pay that per capita number, whatever it is. So the town can't come back after they've cut, after they've set their budget. The town, this body, and respectively the rest of the town, can't come back and say, we don't wanna pay that. We wanna pay a lesser number, or we wanna keep it flat, or we wanna decrease the amount that we're paying to N D D H. The town is committed financially by our board members when they approve that budget. So that's in the bylaws in N D D H, and that's by us joining N D D H. That was part of the, that membership agreement that we committed to when we joined in agreeing into those bylaws. The withdrawal part is actually in statute. That is in statute.
Okay, so it's two separate things.
Two separate things.
Thank you.
But I don't know, you would probably know in the finance department when you were here, when did the town commit to pay the borough's share?
So that has been going on since long before I was the finance director, so. Yeah, so I wanna say that that's been decades in, in the process. I don't even know that the borough, that the borough ever paid their own individual. I think it's always been collectively. The town has always paid the full amount, even though the borough has their own representation. And when we get the letter, when you see the letter that comes from N D D H, it is identified, the amount that is, or the, the population for the borough, right, that is outlined on the letter. However, the borough does not pay that amount. And so for the upcoming year, with the $3.75 increase, if the per capita were really 11.25, the borough's calculation would be about $47,000. That's about how much the borough would have to pay for N D D H fees. So the town has always collectively paid the full cost of the health department fees for the town collectively, including the borough. We have always paid the full, the full fee. And I, again, I tried to look back to see if there was ever a time that the town and the borough, you know, let the borough ever paid theirs own independently. I talked to Carol, so Carol in our finance department has been here for 40 years. She doesn't recall it. And she has a pretty good memory. She recalls a lot. She doesn't recall it. So, you know, I'm thinking that this was just an agreement that was made when we, when the town joined the, the whole, joined the, uh, the district, and because the borough is truly a legislative body, the borough is identified individually as a legislative body versus, and instead of just the town council, right? And so that's where I think that distinction might have occurred, and why the borough has its independent vote from the rest of collectively the town. That, that's the, the best I can surmise from that historical view.
So is the borough against this too?
So I've, I have had a conversation with the borough chair and their, and their treasurer. They, um, they are not supportive of this large, this large increase. They have very similar feelings as collectively around the table. They were gonna be having a conversation with their board representative, which is Elaine Lipke. She is the chair of their finance committee. And so I think that's a conversation that, you know, perhaps, I know that Heidi is looking to attend next week as well. She'll be here. But, yeah, so I know that she, as the chairperson, is not supportive. I don't know that the borough council has had a conversation about that. So I don't know that there can be a stance taken or that she can speak for the borough council, because I don't think the borough council has had a conversation about that.
No, that's coming up in the, the 15th, when we have our meeting this month. We'll be discussing that.
I'll reserve my comment.
Okay. But I mean, honest with you, Heidi was, was on the board when we were literally nickel and diming. So she's definitely with me, and that's, that's just outrageous. That's, that's just. And, and when you're looking for a chief sanitarian, a senior sanitarian, when you have a bunch of empties, you usually hire a chief when you have enough people underneath for that chief to supervise.
You have to have the chief sign off. That's the problem.
Well, I mean, if you have a sanitarian though, you know, you have to have a sanitarian to sign off for an environmentalist. The environmentalists can do the inspections, but why would you wanna hire a chief sanitarian when you have regular openings?
And I totally agree with you if that person didn't have to sign off. It's just like when you, you put in a septic system and you have a blueprint that's drawn up by your engineer. And you do it absolutely perfectly. I mean, to the point that there's not a point out of how long the line is and the pitch and the whole nine yards. not a point out of how long the line is and the pitch and the whole nine yards and the type of gravel and everything you use, you still have to come back and have it as built.
So Dave, I have a question.
So Dave, I have a question with regards to the chief sanitarian. Is that a new, because it's, that appears in this, in this upcoming budget as a new position, as one that's not previously been before. So who, or, because we've had permits have been being signed off on all up until now. Is that a new requirement that the state has put on? Is that a chief sanitarian has to sign off? Or who's been signing off on these up until now?
We lost a sanitarian.
The chief sanitarian?
We lost a sanitarian that was doing, I guess some of the signing off. I can't be a hundred percent sure.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand is why would you need to have a chief sanitarian versus the sanitarian that was signing off in the past?
Because you've got to look at your personnel and whether that person would be retiring.
Right. So just trying to understand why the designation of having to move to a chief sanitarian versus.
We already have one.
Right, but versus a sanit, right, versus just filling the sanitarian slots. What causes that person to, what gives the person the capability to sign off on the permits that another sanitarian would not have the capacity to sign off on?
To my understanding, it's some of the courses and degrees that that person has. The only other person that can sign off now, well, could sign off now, or could do the inspection, is Sue, the director.
So has she been filling that chief sanitarian position, or could she do that?
I don't know if she's signing off, or she's just, she told me that she was going out and doing inspections. I asked for one day a week. I think I got an afternoon.
I'm not going to be delicate about asking this. I was thinking about the delicate way of asking this. If, if you are truly having, and I don't want to say that, that it is, but because I don't really know, because I am not there. But if you're truly having a leadership issue, is it the purview of the board to then either issue a no confidence vote or change leadership?
At the last board meeting, she, her contract was renewed for one year with some no votes. She is a, like the town manager, serves at will. You would have to have, I would hope you'd have to have enough in your thought person, her personnel file that you could legitimately do something. You can't do it just like that. You've got to have grounds.
So, so if you had multiple towns out of your twelve towns send in a no confidence letter?
No. We, when it was just a discussion, we threw it out there to renew her contract for one year.
And does that contract run June, July to June or December calendar year?
It was a very good question, because we did that after I left as chairman. So that must have been three months ago.
So probably a calendar year basis?
So I don't know if you can, I'm not enough up on that contract to know whether you can, after you once upgraded the contract for one year, whether you can go back and change that.
No, I was just trying to figure out when the contract ends. If it's a one-year extension, like what's the time period of the one year? Like are, is she on a calendar year, one-year renewal, or is it a?
I think it's the one year that, where she was signed off, because it all started when the state asked for me to sign off. And in signing off, I had to also say who the director was and what her contract said for the length. So that's when I first realized that she'd been there thirteen years and that it was time that that contract should be either upgraded or renewed or rejected.
This is a procedural, because I don't know. I don't know much about this particular process. Can you do per DM? Like, could you take a, a stack of sign offs and send them, you know, by courier or whatever for four hours and have somebody else, another sanitarian G sign off?
It's a good question. I don't, I have no idea whether it has to be done in district or sent out, or could be sent out of district to handle it. But I think most of this that I've been talking about, the overabundance of requests coming in for the building permits and, and all the rest of that, I'm looking, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, that is not going to happen again in the next couple of years. But that doesn't mean we still haven't got to get caught up to where we are. I think we're in a bad position. I wouldn't want to be in a position that you're saying that something is certified by the state, an establishment, and you haven't ever followed through for paying for a permit and an inspection that you never got.
So you're saying a lot of people don't come forward to the board to say that there's issues. Is that?
That's true. They're afraid to come forward.
Because even lately, you know, some people, they want, they will talk to me, you can't say my name for repercussions of what might happen. Like, there's a couple of restaurant people, they said, yeah, well, very carefully, they, they don't want to go into too much detail.
I've asked nine people to come forward because they had complaints and not one of them were willing to come forward.
And that's what I'm saying, because, you know, the restaurants, I mean, one, a couple individuals, they were saying, that's been three years. They paid for the, they paid for the permit. I am paying for this. We have not had an inspection in so long. But if I say something, my next inspection, I will fail.
I don't know that for.
I don't know for sure. I mean, that's what.
That is what they all feel. I know that. And because the other ones told me that, you know, I put out, I asked for a permit to do something. And it should be what we used to do, that you either, within three weeks, you would either get approved, denied, or incomplete. A lot of them are afraid that if it's incomplete, it goes to the bottom of the pile. So if you already waited three weeks, you may wait two or three more months. I can't prove that. But that's what they think. And I'd like to get to the bottom of that one, too. Everybody should be treated fairly. And I know a lot of the plans are incomplete. And we want to make them complete. I remember being on the, on the council and we had a section of town, they put in septic tanks that weren't approved. The damn septic tanks come popping out of the ground. And what does that mean to you? Then you've got to run the sewer line out there to cover it. So I mean, it, it isn't just public health as we think about it on the surface. You're engaging people all the way along if you don't do it right.
Any more questions, comments from council? Do you have anything further for us? Mr. Grandowski?
On our, I briefly was talking to the people downstairs, and they were careful of what they were saying. I guess we talked to you. But on some of the, the B one hundred forms, do we track the time it takes for the health department to respond with, I don't know how that system really works. They were, they were.
We don't necessarily.
Careful, is it, because if someone wants a building permit for whatever reason, and then they have to get that, whatever that form is, that goes to the health department. So the town, Killenley sends that to the health department, or is that to the individual?
No. It's up to the individual. We don't, we don't transmit anything to NDDH, the individual files. So we don't necessarily track that, because we're not corresponding that.
Okay, so that, all right. I understand.
But the building department would probably hear some of the complaints.
They, right, they do.
Well, that's where I'm going. But because we are not responsible to bring the form there, it puts us in a.
Just you. It comes to board members that we have to stand up if people in the area are having a difficulty. And then you have to look into it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm, I'm trying to look, how do we?
And I had one looked into, and immediately everyone said, no, you're wrong. We handled it. Well, damn it, three weeks later, oh, I find it in the file. We misplaced it. That took the person another two months before they got approval. They, I had to wait three months before they could open a business because they were doing an addition.
Yeah, but see, as, as Joe individually, you don't know some of the rules. You don't know that if you don't get, maybe, okay, I'm waiting so long. They don't know that you're the representative of Killenley. How would they know to get to you? I mean, how do we, how do we bring that forward that if someone is, I mean, we've got, we have so many things going on down there, too, within the building inspection for what the town is responsible for. How do you take the person and say, you know, maybe you should call our representatives? How do, I, I don't know how we get that.
People who know that I was the chair and a representative, call me directly. For those people, otherwise, hopefully they'll complain to the building inspector or somebody else, give it to Mary, and Mary would move it forward to us.
Yeah. And usually if it's a bill, if it's a building-related matter, like it's a, you know, it's holding up construction or something, building, our building inspectors are, they, they hear it, because it's the construction guys, you know, wonkin' in their ears. And so that's when, you know, my building department can let me know, hey, this is what's being held up, and I can relay it over to them. So I have, I have that communication down to my building department to say, hey, you need to make sure that you, you alert me and let me know when you're, you know, experiencing these or you're hearing this is going on. So that way I can relay it over to our board members, so that way they can be apprised of that.
Because when, if he can see, then you can take that piece of paper and verify it. I mean, it's, it's a, not an exact science, but I mean, we got to get it to you guys.
But it's every single town that needs to be doing this, and that's what's not happening. If you've been a board member for too long, you don't like to challenge who the person is in charge. No one likes to make enemies. True?
Sometimes you go to ruffle feathers. Now, is there a way that we could, the building department could convey to people who are applying for permits that are going to have to go to NDDH for a permit as well, that this is about how much time you could expect to receive a response from them if you don't let us know and we'll assist in looking into it? Or would that be adding too much of a burden on our staff?
So my only concern with that is that we're projecting what another agency might have for timelines that we have no control over. And that sets a whole different expectation for them. And then they believe that there is some perception that we have control over that process, which we don't. And so, you know, I, I caution around that, but I think that our, our, you know, our building officials and our fire marshals have a really good dialogue with all of the contractors and the, and the, you know, homeowners that come in. They kind of really walk through, like, you're going to need to get this done and this done, to try and help, you know, educate them through that process as well. So, you know, I think they already have a pretty good dialogue around that. And, you know, I think that they kind of help guide.
I tried to draw up a form that when people came in to apply, they could fill out the form that would say, how have you been treated? Did you get it in a timely manner? Oh, nobody would fill that damn thing out, of course. I couldn't get them to fill it out.
Well, what I, what could, I don't know, there's something we can, if there was like a checkoff list, particularly if you've got a homeowner. Contractors generally know what they need at the health department. But if it's a homeowner that's doing their own project and doing their own contracting, if, if there was some kind of a checkoff list, you got to make sure you have X, Y, and Z, or else it's going to get delayed. And just.
There was some talk, and I haven't gotten to the bottom of it, because I didn't get any answer. I have heard talk from some contractors, that if they didn't get some type of notification in three weeks, they could go ahead with their protest. That was three weeks. You never had that?
No.
No. Pat, I've heard that as talk. I have not got to the bottom of it.
Depends on the code. Depends on all the code.
Well, I was just going to say that. If the code, if the state said you've got to do, you have to review this in a certain amount of time.
Massachusetts is thirty days.
Okay.
I don't know what.
That may be something.
But that's for the building official, not necessarily if you deal with another entity.
Well, that would be something that what the code says with the, the charter of the health district, somewhere in there.
In their code.
If that's, someone finds that out, then someone, an individual could bring that to you and say, look, I brought this piece of paper, and now you have something. Well, and then you bring it, but.
But that's something that we should think about, that there should be a timeline by the time you submit an application. Either it's approved, denied, or incomplete. And it should be a time, maybe thirty days, maybe three weeks. It should be something. So the homeowner or the business isn't just out there waiting and not knowing what the outcome is going to be. That's my appeal. And the other one I'd like to get done is the sticker or something on the permit in the restaurant. When you go in and you look for that, it has to be hung in a prominent place. You should know when the inspector was there or wasn't there.
If they're not performing as disposed to, and then you see this fifty percent increase, and, you know, the buzz in it, it's like, that's where it kind of, you know, they said, we're playing catch-up, but I mean, you take their fifty percent increase, and we're way above, you know, pretty much.
A year ago, we only got fifteen percent of our restaurants inspected. Now we're up to around twenty-five percent.
Yeah, we, they were, restaurant inspections were real, always a big issue, but they weren't anywhere as close to this. I think we were closing in on almost a hundred percent at one point, but I'm sure COVID didn't help. Nobody wanted to go near anybody else.
That was some of it. It certainly was.
Well, that was a comment I got from a couple of restaurant people. I was like, they can go to Brooklyn Fair and Woodstock Fair, take care of all of them, out-of-town entities. And in a way, they were like, oh, you pay so much to the health district. And, but again, don't quote me, don't use my name, don't. How do you?
Are you all set?
Anything further? No? Thank you for your time. Thank you for all the information. And thank you for being conservative with the town's money, the taxpayers' money.
It is his money.
Yeah, it is. It's, it is. It is.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the valuable information.
Yes, definitely.
See you next week.
Yes, we look forward to it.
Don't worry, it's at the end of the meeting if it's going to be lost.
The presentation's at the very beginning, Dave. So it should be at the beginning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on in the agenda. Have a good night. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is the executive session. We have nothing for that. Next up is adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.